I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for February 5th, 2013. I'll be inviting Police Chaplain Brother Joe Cosley to step up to the microphone and deliver the invocation. Invite you to stand if you chose to. Thank you, Brother Joe.
If you'll join me as we pray together. Dear Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you, Lord, for the gift of everlasting life. We thank you for the privilege of being here tonight. We pray, Father, your blessing upon our city commission, upon our officials. Lord, we recognize they have a difficult responsibility and sometimes seemingly impossible, but we know that nothing is impossible with you. We pray that you give them wisdom. We pray that you give them knowledge. We pray that you give them guidance. We pray, Father, for every aspect of government which is brought before this meeting tonight, that you would bless those who are to receive awards, that you would guide them in their new responsibilities, that you would help us make the decisions that are in the best interest of the public, and, Lord, that you would continue to bless and keep all of us safe. And we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Cosley. We've got a special treat tonight to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance for retired Bowling Green Police Captain Brett Hightower, also retired U.S. Army, and now Law Enforcement Coordinator for the Western District of Kentucky United States Attorney's Office.
Yes, sir. Y'all will join, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother. Appreciate it. Ms. Shaller, please call or roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Mayor Wilkinson?
Here. Mr. DeFebbe, awards and recognitions that you'd like to make tonight. I think we have Operation Pride Awards. Quentin Hughes is here with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, and on behalf of Operation Pride Board of Directors, Commissioners, senior staff, I'd like to make a presentation for Operation Pride's commercial February award, and it goes to Kimball-Pool, Pool-Kimball and Deve at 418 East 10th. They did a marvelous job of renovating an old historic building downtown, and it looks fabulous from curb appeal and just a wonderful improvement for the downtown area. So with that...
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, Your Honor. Mr. Deve, we'd invite you to the microphone and make a comment or two.
You know, being a lawyer and all, I can't pass up a microphone. With three of us here tonight, y'all may be running late for the UK basketball game at 8:00, so we'll be brief on it. On behalf of Tom and Phil, we'd like to thank the City Commission and Operation Pride for these nice awards, and Mayor Wilkinson, particularly thanks to you for your assistance in us achieving this. This had to do with renovations to our office, the back of it, the side and the front of the windows, that were quite time-consuming and quite an effort to get done. It took a long time to get it done, and we're very pleased to be there. Wanted to pay a special recognition tonight to the contractor that did the work for us. He did the work; we just paid him. His name is Terry Hatler of Terry Hatler Construction Company. He had surgery today and could not be here with us. He is okay, but he had surgery. So his daughter Emily, with baby Charlie, and husband Tim are with us tonight on behalf of the Hatler Construction Company, and we wanted to recognize them for a wonderful job on our building. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thanks, Your Honor. Appreciate it. Thank you for making the downtown look so wonderful, especially right across the street here. Thank you. Did you have another award?
I'm the silent partner.
That was just the one award tonight, Clinton?
Yes, sir.
All right. The only other awards and recognitions we'd like to make is, of course, we remembered some retirements from the Police Department. Barry Raely left us January 1st, who was a Master Police Officer, an investigator for nearly 20 years of service. And we had some retirements effective February 1st, both of which were called upon for extended military service. Assistant Police Chief Clark Arnold, after 21 years, will be retiring, and Police Sergeant John Houghton, after 18 years of service, will be retiring. We wish them well and safety in their new endeavors. All right. Mr. DeFebbe, City Manager, comments?
Yes, sir. First will be a need for an executive session. Katie will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific pieces of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. And KRS 61810G, discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity in discussions concerning a specific proposal. If open discussions would jeopardize the citing, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the businesses. Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor, also, I'm deferring my time to Dr. John Long to provide an update on the African-American museum. Dr. Long?
Mayor Wilkinson, the Honorable Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, and the Honored Commissioners, and Mr. DeFebbe, and to all, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. First of all, I believe you have received our reports, actually, and you've had them at least a month, I guess. Are there any questions you would have with me?
Any questions for Dr. Long? Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. I can read this, or if that's sufficient, we'll just end. I won't waste the committee's time. It won't take your time.
If you wouldn't mind touching briefly on the highlights of it, we'd want to ask you to read the whole thing, just so that people at home would know the work that you've been doing over the past six months.
This will be for... We'll touch on first... I don't handle paper very well, although you'd think, having talked for several years, that I would, but I don't. At any rate, let me touch on some of the highlights of the things we've done. We had several things on our timeline that we wanted to get accomplished, and so as we looked at that timeline, we decided to bring to the City Commission here the things that we were able to accomplish. And so, as is true of any situation, we may have 100 things to do. We'll accomplish maybe 50 or less, but we didn't have that many, but we did accomplish a number of things. I'll make mention of the period of time, say, from October through December of 2012. We mailed out thank you letters to each contributor to the museum with an update of the year's accomplishments and projections for 2013 opening. Included with the letter was a receipt for the contribution of the tax records of the contributor for the 2012 tax year. The receipt informed the contributor that the African-American Museum Bowling Green Area was a 501(c)(3) organization and gave the details of the date of the contribution, the amount, a reference number, the check or the receipt number, the required statement that no goods or services were provided by the museum in return for the contribution, and offered the cautionary notice that the contributor consult the services of the Internal Revenue Service or qualified tax supplier to ascertain the deductibility of the contribution. I know that some of you made contributions. You all should have received those letters. Did you, or did you not?
Yes, I received them.
Thank you. All right. It edited, reviewed, and accepted the pending final revisions of all of the policies and procedures of the museum, except for one, which is the volunteer policy, a total of 11 out of 12. It is currently negotiating with the Department of Architecture and Manufacturing Sciences at Western Kentucky University to engage building design and media design consultants. It is working closely with the department head, Dr. Keith Sylvester, to ensure successful translation of the museum's ideas and vision into a suitable museum space, the successful integration of all media technologies into the proposed design, the building of a detailed mock-up that includes projected future expansions and improvements, and the timely and successful completion of all contracted work. This arrangement developed out of a decision of the board to forego temporarily hiring a part-time special project coordinator, engaging instead the building design and media design consultants as part of the collaboration with the Department of Architecture and Manufacturing Sciences. Continuing with the accomplishments of the objectives of the museum, it has filed the income tax return for the period ending 30 June 2012. It's looking to engage the services of Ms. Laura Hagan for the intellectual property concerns, and, as necessary, the services of the attorneys of the firm of Carrick-Stybers Coil. In addition, the board has approved the engagement of a social media consultant pending the review of the contract by its attorney. The Board of Directors continues to work to accomplish the mission and realize the vision of the museum. In the second quarter of the 2012 year, 2012-2013 year, of the board members representing the museum received a donation of $500 from the Theta Alpha Alpha Chapter of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated at its annual Founder's Day banquet celebration held on November 16th, 2012, at the National Corvette Museum. Finally, to pick up a metaphor from the earlier report of the first quarter, we just may say that the foundations for the museum have now been laid. We are setting about erecting the superstructure. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. Are there any questions you may have?
One question I asked, and I'm going to put you on the spot. I know you brought several of your board members here tonight. Would you ask them to stand and tell us who they are, please, sir?
Want all of you to stand?
That way, if anyone has any questions and they know these particular individuals, they know who to approach.
Would each of you state your name?
My name is Eugenia Scott.
My name's St. Grace.
Lauren A. Foxer.
Kathy Dunn.
John Harder.
Angela Little.
Jennifer Claypool.
What better be than...
Thank you for the work that you're doing. We appreciate it. Look forward to seeing it when we get open, too.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir.
Sir, oh, thank you very much.
Anything else? All right, Mr. DeFebbe, did you have any other comments?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Need to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on January 15th, 2013?
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. This is the part of the meeting where we open up for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we'd invite them to come to the microphone at this time. Saying no one step forward, we'll begin with ordinance number 2013-1, second reading.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 8.31 acres of property located on Small House Road near the intersection of Cape Hill Road with property presently owned by Small House Road Partners LLC and 1.56 acres of right-of-way for a total of 9.87 acres, and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes, same extension. Municipal Order 2013-20.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Melanie A. Watts to the position of Assistant Police Chief, Matthew A. Edwards to the position of Police Captain, Michael E. Kiefer and Jason D. Scott to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe?
Mayor, I'd ask Chief Hawkins to come forward and put his recommendations before you.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for letting me be here tonight. Before I get started on this, I wanted to touch on, if I could, for just a minute what the mayor had mentioned earlier about several members of the Bowling Green Police Department that are currently or have served in military deployment. Some of these promotions tonight are as a result of that, but I didn't want to go without recognizing several other folks who are also serving in the military that are active-duty police officers with the Bowling Green Police Department, or, in one case, one of our cadets. We mentioned Clark Arnold, who is retiring or who has effectively retired several days ago. He was deployed three separate times during his term of employment with the Bowling Green Police Department. Sergeant John Houghton, who is... has just recently retired, served in active duty in Desert Storm, plus two additional activations during his employment with the Bowling Green Police Department. Recently returned from Afghanistan, Officer Michelle Owens, who was activated for about a year. Officer Jeff Gleitz, who is currently activated and is serving stateside and soon to be deployed overseas. And Officer Jason Franks and Sergeant Todd Porter, who are both short-term activated for some schools that they are required to attend, and those are a couple of months, actually, three months, I think, in one case. We do have a cadet, Colton Bill Hartz, who is serving active duty and deployed as well. And you mentioned earlier, and it shouldn't go without being repeated, and we appreciate him being here, retired Captain Brett Hightower, who served in Afghanistan and is here supporting his fellow officers tonight in their recommendation for promotion. Now, on with the business at hand. I would like to present four for promotion, three as a result of the retirement of Major Clark Arnold, and then one as a result of the retirement of Sergeant John Houghton. And I would like to go through those all at once, if I could, please. Melanie Watts is actually from Franklin, Tennessee, but had the wisdom to move to Bowling Green at some point in her life. And I've known Melanie personally, actually, since she... before she became a police officer. In her former life and my former life, I knew her when she worked at Camping World way back when, in the call-taking center, and she used to, if you picked up the phone and wanted to order something from their catalog, she would be nice enough to answer it.
Nice.
She is... Nice, yes, sir. Yes, sir. She was hired with the Bowling Green Police Department February 20th, 1995. Her first promotion to Sergeant was in September 10th of 2003, and then promotion to Captain August 8th of 2007. Assignments of note, she served in our Neighborhood Response Team, or NRT. She has served on the Drug Task Force with Tommy Loving, representing the Bowling Green Police Department. She served for a period of time in criminal investigations as a supervisor. She also served for a period of time as Captain in Special Operations Division. She is a graduate of Warren Central High School.
That's what's wrong with her.
She is a graduate and double major from Western Kentucky University in both broadcasting and psychology. She has a master's degree in criminal justice from Eastern Kentucky University, and she is a proud graduate of the Administrative Officers Course from the Southern Police Institute at the University of Louisville. She is leading the charge locally and statewide in crisis intervention training, and she's the Chair of the Regional Committee. She is a hostage negotiator, trained specially for that purpose. And she wanted me to specifically note, and for those of you who know John Stewart, apparently John Stewart was one of her training officers early in her career, and she says that she's still here following that experience, so there must be something about her that is stick-to-itiveness, if you will. Supporting her tonight are her mother, Priscilla Stutz, and the most important man in her life, Johnny Watts. On to Matt Edwards, who I'm bringing before this commission for promotion to Captain. Matt was raised in Columbia, Kentucky, and graduated from a Derrick County high school. I'm sure that doesn't compare to any high school in Warren County, but he did pass. Said he worked on a dairy farm growing up until he came to Western Kentucky University. And he actually was one of our early cadets, and Matt is an example of the success of our cadet program as we began to develop young folks who are interested in law enforcement into a career, and he worked as a cadet and certainly on as a police officer and police sergeant. He was hired as a cadet September 9th, 2001, and then hired as a police officer December 9th, 2002. As sergeant, he had the unique experience, as a matter of fact, if I remember correctly, while Captain Hightower was activated, of serving as an acting sergeant for a period of time, and he began that service in September of 2007, then was officially promoted to sergeant in October of 2009. During his time with the Bowling Green Police Department, Matt has served on the Critical Response Team beginning January 2005 to date. He is actually the Critical Response Team Commander now. He served in the Residence Against Drugs from January of 2006 to September of 2007, working with Abraham Williams in that role. He is our Citizens Police Academy Coordinator since fall of 2009, working with other members, to include Ronnie Ward. He is the Junior Police Academy Coordinator, and if you know Matt, he fits in with the kids. He gets along very well with them, both personality-wise and stature-wise, so we allow Matt to continue to work in that role. He is a driving instructor and does not require blocks on the pedals to do that. And he currently serves on the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission Executive Board since Matt, like... well, maybe not like everybody. Matt has and continues to work on his undergraduate degree, but he doesn't seem to find a college he can like. He's been to Eastern Kentucky University, Lindsey Wilson College, and Western Kentucky University, none of which have kept him the full term toward his bachelor's degree, so we wish him luck as he proceeds toward that end. He has been to the Academy of Police Supervision, which is a specialty school at the Department of Criminal Justice. He's been through our Basic SWAT and the National Taskful Officer Association Command Course. He's also been trained as a driver's instructor at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. Supporting Matt tonight is his wife, Jen, his parents, Tommy and Sharon Edwards, his brother and his wife, Landon and Dana Edwards, mother-in-law, Dee Green, and he puts down here that Brett Hightower is his mentor, and he probably couldn't find a better mentor, so we appreciate Brett being here for him. I bring before you Sergeant... Michael Kiefer for Sergeant. Michael was born and raised in Bowling Green. He attended and graduated from Warren Central High School, also has attended Western Kentucky He was also one of our explorers, another fine example of the quality of people that began their careers in the explorer post and worked their way up the ladder toward police officer, was a cadet, and hired as a police officer June 30th of 2003. During his time with the Bowling Green Police Department, he's been an explorer advisor and continues to be interested in that. He is one of our best police training officers. We have, up until this point, relied on Michael heavily to help train the young officers coming up. He's been doing that since 2007. He's a member of our honor guard since 2008, and most recently, he is leading the charge with our internal tech team to help the department determine the best technologies to adopt as we move forward to improve efficiency and effectiveness in the delivery of our police services. He has also, which is a little bit unusual, but prior to being promoted to Police Sergeant, has had the opportunity to attend the Academy of Police Supervision, which I think will benefit him well. Supporting him tonight is his wife, Hannah, his mother, Jane, and his aunt, Kathy Dunn. We appreciate them being here with Michael tonight. And certainly, last but not least, Officer Jason Scott, who I bring before you and recommending for promotion to Sergeant. Grew up in Cave City and went to Converna Independent Schools. Graduated high school in 1999. That probably tells your age, Jason. He puts on here, and I guess it's of note, that he married his wife, Kanitha, in 2003, and then he's also a graduate of Western Kentucky University with a bachelor's degree. He was hired July 19th, 2004. He is a member of our police motorcycle unit since May of 2007. He's also one of our police training officers. We're allowing him, again, to train young, new officers. And just recently finished a deployment with the Drug Task Force, working with Tommy Loving for the last three and a half years. He has attended the DEA clandestine lab in Quantico, Virginia, and that's a high-level training that teaches officers how to clean up meth labs, very specialized training. And he's also, as a role with the Drug Task Force, has attended several undercover and covert trainings. I mentioned before, his wife, Kanitha, is here to support him, along with his mother and father, Randy, and Janann Scott, along with his brother and sister-in-law, Nick and Holly Scott. And I would ask that you approve the recommendations for promotion for all four candidates. Thank you.
Not quite so fast. I think we might have a question or two. Mr. Denny?
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Having had the pleasure and honor of being a member of Bowling Green Police Department dating back to the days of horse and buggies and no bulletproof vests and one bullet in our gun, it is an honor to sit here tonight and have an opportunity to vote on these distinguished individuals tonight. Chief, we have given you the responsibility through the City Manager to decide what individuals, based on other things, that you have to look at to these respective positions. We have one going to Assistant Police Chief, one to Captain, and two to Sergeant, major positions within our police department here in Bowling Green. And looking at these promotions, as I've had the honor to do over a few years, usually there's one that someone has a question about. Tonight is no different. Are you sure about all of them?
I did the best I can do. And much like a woodworker with wood, you can only make the best piece of furniture out of the wood that you're given, and so I think I've done the best I can do, given the raw material.
I understand, Chief, and I have all the trust and confidence in you, but I just wanted to ask that about one of the individuals. I'm not going to call her no name, but she's one of the ones being promoted, and you've satisfied me.
Thank you.
I think the mayor has... you have some questions?
Well, I knew the question you were going to ask, the converse, and are you sure you want this one now?
You know, all jokes aside, we certainly are proud of any of our individuals within any of our departments that get promoted, and especially to these positions here. These are the movers and shakers of a major police department, and these individuals that you've chosen, I know, are going to be outstanding individuals in their respective Having been in some similar spots in the past, I think is very fortunate, and it's an honor, and it is something I'm sure of, that hasn't taken place in other major police departments across the Commonwealth of Kentucky. We now have two individuals, two individuals that are outstanding policemen that, like the others that we promote, has worked their way to the top. They got there by doing those things out there in the community that has to be done in police work. We are going to have now two Assistant Police Chiefs that are females, something that hasn't been done that I know of in the Commonwealth of Kentucky at the same time, that says a lot about our community, but it says a lot about those individuals. And let there be no mistake, those individuals, as well as the other individuals that we're promoting here tonight, had to get in that car out there... promoting here tonight, had to get in that car out there when it's ten below, fifteen above, when everybody else is at home. Those individuals are the same ones that had to go down and wrestle with the drunk that are in our jails every other week, or every week in the case of some. All of them here tonight has gone from patrolman to their respective positions. And they got it the hard way. They earned it. Let it be no mistake about that. They've earned the spots that they are being promoted to tonight. And when you gotta get out there and wrestle with drunks, drunk drivers, go to the wreck when it's ten forty-five or a ten forty-six accident with no one hurt, ten forty-six accident with someone hurt, which can be fatal, all of them have learned, earned their way to where they at. And I, as old former Bowling Green policeman here in nineteen sixty-eight and a Kentucky State Trooper, I wish them well. It's not an easy job. It's not everyone that wants to be a police officer, but we've gotta have them. In this country, we have got to have them. And I admire those who are able to put on a uniform, whether it's blue, gray, or in the case of Cincinnati Police Department, which I do not understand why they wear white shirts. I'm proud of them. Thank you, Mayor.
I know all of us on the commission congratulate Melanie Watts, Matt Edwards, Jason Scott, and Michael Kiefer. If I can invite you to stand so that we could let people at home see who we've been ribbon to the last end. I know we've taken a lot of time here tonight, but this is important. We've got the best police department in the state, and it shows from the four that we hired and sworn in Monday to the four that we promote tonight, so congratulations to you. And I guess we need to vote to make sure that this happens, right? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes. Congratulations again. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anybody off if anybody had anything to say. Thank you. I know that you guys wanna leave and go down and do your pictures and penning, so we'll give you that opportunity to slip out here. I'm sorry, I forgot to say if you had anything to say.
I'm sorry, Bruce, I got carried away.
Preach on, brother.
I'll take my money now.
Well, they get it from them, you know.
Oh, Melanie, my buddy, I love her to death. Oh, yeah, it's gone. And Katie come throwing in this damn after closed session meeting. Am I on there?
You think?
Yeah. Sorry about that. And let, you should be ashamed, you'll say.
All right, let's continue on with Municipal Order two thousand and thirteen, number twenty-one.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Willis R. Leach to the Bowling Green Warren County Military Liaison Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. This is a, filling the expired term of Ray Lackey, who is actually going to retire this time, so any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order two thousand and thirteen, twenty-two.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Karen Foley to the University District Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dunning and second by Hill. This is a, an appointment to the University District Review. Just to remind you that we removed the requirement for this to be a commission appointment, but it is still a city appointment, and Mr. DeFabo recommended Ms. Foley, who agreed to...
I think she would do a great job and would interact well with the committee and represent the city well.
And from the Neighborhood Community Services Department, so it'll be a good fit. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order two thousand and thirteen, twenty-three.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand and thirteen, twenty-two for uniforms for the police department from Bluegrass Uniforms Incorporated and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky, for a total group cost of sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
Our cadre of police and fire department employees, officers require specialized uniforms and equipment. We went out to bid for police uniforms in this case, as well as footwear for them. We had three bids. We are here tonight to ask you to separate the bids and to ward the uniform bid to Bluegrass Uniforms and the shoes to Nats Outdoor Sports, and both companies are in the Bowling Green area. Doug goes here, if you have any questions about how well the uniform or use the shoes, or if you have a question.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order two thousand and thirteen, twenty-four.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand and thirteen, zero seven for in-car video project digital video system from Coban Technologies Incorporated of Houston, Texas, in an amount not to exceed seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
One of the things we specialize in as a company is dealing with those unforeseen occurrences that come along every so often that affect our job. We're here tonight with Municipal Order six, seven, and eight that relate to our need to re-bid and develop our in-car camera system for a police department. I would ask Doug, and he's promised to be terse, to explain Municipal Order six, seven, and eight. Lynn Hartley is also here to provide any technical backup on any of these three Municipal Orders. Doug, you wanna come forward and give an overview?
I appreciate y'all enduring my long-winded discussion earlier, although I thought that was important. What we're dealing with and what the next three municipal orders deal with specifically is our need to effectively build an entirely new in-car camera system. We have a good in-car camera system that the past vendor went bankrupt. We no longer have access to their product. We no longer have access to their technical support. We were incomplete in finishing the in-car camera project. We have all of our patrol, virtually all of our patrol, less maybe one or two vehicles that have been equipped, but now this system is failing us in that we've had to reach out to former employees of the bankrupt company to help us keep this system afloat while we try to establish a new system. We did re-bid the product that we felt was appropriate for our needs. We had multiple bidders on that that was, that were evaluated by members of information technology and the police department. That bid was then broken down into three separate components of the same project. One was a product from Coban, which is the in-car camera company. One part of that project is the wireless network that's established at the Bowling Green Police Department. When the cars come into the police department parking lot, there's an auto upload of the video that's on their systems wirelessly, so they don't have to have hard docking of the equipment. And then there is also a server to store and manage all of that information on, and all of that has to be reestablished as we move forward building the new system out. And so I hope I was concise in that description, and if you have any questions, Lynn and I will be happy to answer those.
Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order two thousand and thirteen, twenty-five.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand and thirteen, zero eight for in-car video project net app storage from J B K Network Consulting of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill.
Again, ditto on the next two.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
And Municipal Order two thousand and thirteen, twenty-six.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand and thirteen, zero nine for in-car video project general purpose hardware, software from J B K Network Consulting of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance, BG two thousand and thirteen, two.
Ordinance relating to cable television franchise and ordinance of the City of Bowling Green section of the Bowling Green Warren County Cable Franchise Authority approving extension of non-exclusive cable franchise agreement with Insight Kentucky Partners Two LP.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
Since this is essentially a technical, legal document, I would ask Gene to speak to it, but before he does, I'd just like to remind the viewing public that we have started a new service on our website. It's called Mythbusters, and I think there's a TV program similar to that, in which we aim to explain to the public some of the misconceptions about things that happen in city government. And the first show, believe it or not, is dedicated to cable television, so I will let Mr. Harmon give an explanation of this franchise agreement.
Yes, it is not exclusive, and we are open to competition. Any questions? That's the same questions we get all the time. This is, we repeat it again, not exclusive. Any other cable company has the right to come into Bowling Green and seek, hopefully, a franchise like Insight has, to provide cable service. I think everybody knows, we have a joint franchise authority with Warren County, so the board is basically the City Commission and Fiscal Court, but we, most of the time, like this one, we'll do things separately. The Bowling Green section will approve this, and then the Fiscal Court section will approve the same thing. Basically, what we're doing right now is we're continuing almost a twenty-year-old franchise. The franchise we now started in nineteen ninety-six. We've gone through two or three different companies. It's still called Insight, but as everybody knows, about a year ago, we transferred the ownership, we approved the transfer of the ownership of Insight to Time Warner. So we are in effect a Time Warner company, but they kept the Insight name, so that's still a company that operate and under. For us tonight, our franchise technically expired about five days ago. It expired January thirty-first. The only thing we're doing tonight is continuing the franchise for another two years, and after that, we can go probably another two years if we can get some changes made, or if we don't. After that, we're probably gonna do something more extensive, because that's gonna complete a twenty-year franchise term. And the twenty years is kind of a magic number for franchise agreements. What we're doing tonight, though, is continuing the same franchise agreement in place that we've had for the last three, four, or five years, with no changes. The last thing we did to change this, a couple of years ago, we, about five years ago, I guess, we did make sure, we wanted to keep our, we went from one government channel to two. We wanted to make sure those government channels stayed low on the cable system, so that people would be able to find them. We keep hearing some places that are putting, you know, the government channels or the PEG channels, like on Channel ninety-nine on demand, and I don't think that's something we wanted to do. We wanted those to stay on Channels Three and Four. But other than that, well, it's pretty much status quo. Commissioner Dunning, we will continue to talk, you know, during this negotiation, we talked about two or three particular issues. The county, probably more than us, had an issue with line extension. Right now, it's twenty houses per linear strand mile, I think, with twenty structures. They would like to reduce that, because they have some subdivisions out in the county. They don't have cable because they're beyond that extension policy. We're continuing to talk about that issue. We were not able to get any agreement to reduce at that time, at least for right now. We continue to talk with Insight about Louisville and Lexington, Louisville or Lexington channel. We've not had discussion, yes, about that in a while, but I'll follow up again and see where it is. But, you know, we've said a number of times, cable franchises now are mostly controlled by the federal government and the FCC instead of local governments. There's not a whole lot of control local governments have over cable franchises anymore. Now, we talk about rates. The only rates that we can approve are the rates for the basic cable service, which is basically the twenty or twenty-five lower number of channels, the on-air, you know, things, most of the stuff we can get on air without cable, some things not, like the PEG channels, but, you know, the CBS, NBC, Fox, ABC's channels, PBS, those channels are normally located on the basic cable, and we do have some authority to regulate those rates, although those rates have not changed here in Bowling Green, gosh, ten, fifteen years. They stay pretty constant. We do not have the ability to regulate the rates on the movie channels or on the other packages like ESPN and the sports channels. That's not within purview. Probably one of the most significant changes that's taken place over the last several years was up until a few years ago, the city and county imposed a three percent franchise fee. The state passed legislation where now all franchise fees are actually collected by the state. They then turned around and reimbursed, if that's the term, or paid the city. The statute said paid us what we would have collected. In reality, that did not happen. We're now receiving less from the state than we received before that legislation took place. There's been a number of efforts, I think, to amend that legislation, put more money into it, but state governments, like a lot of governments, they're not flush with money and have not been real interested in doing that, and I'll refer to Jeff, I think last I heard, we're still fifteen percent or so less in revenue than we were getting when we had our own franchise fee. But, you know, again, that's not part of the franchise agreement anymore, that's been consumed by state legislation. So, you know, the main thing, a lot of people ask me why we need to do the franchise. Well, we still do have some language in there about, you know, how they do work in the right ways, about permitting and taking care and replacing the rights away that they cut through from time to time. And for me, the main thing is the PEG channels, the requirement that they provide the public governmental access channels, the educational channels, you know, where they place them. The line extension policy, we still have. Some places don't have as good a line extension policy as we have, so it could be worse than what we have, you know, for certain. But those are part of the three or four major things. This one, again, is just for two years, through December thirty-first to two thousand and Time Warner is now by far the largest franchise, TV franchise, cable franchise company in the state. They have all the major areas, have Lexington, Louisville, Northern Kentucky, Owensboro, Henderson. A lot of those franchises are kind of like ours, either have expired or are expiring. So I think right now, everybody's kind of looking, this is the first time anybody's dealt with Time Warner, so everybody's kind of looking to see what's negotiable. What we thought, you know, some places have actually expired. I don't think we thought that was a good idea to have an expired franchise in place. So we were proposing from Amy Milton to the county and meet a year, is that we go ahead and do this extension for the next two years. Over the next two years, we'll kind of watch to see what some of the larger communities, like Louisville, Lexington, and Northern Kentucky, do about their franchise agreements to see, you know, maybe what negotiation ability they have with Time Warner to get other things or new things, technology changes as well. So we'll be watching those other communities, and maybe in the next, probably, we will start this renewal again, probably in a year or less. It's, it takes a long time, as you can see, we're expired now. It takes a long time to get everybody to table and talk about stuff and get the franchise agreements out and ready to go. But right now, we're recommending that we go ahead and extend the existing one for a couple of years, and then in the next couple of years, we'll start working on the next renewal.
Yeah, summarize. The basic is the twelve ninety-five package with very limited over-the-air channels, basically.
Yes.
And franchise doesn't mean to us what most people think that it means, in that it becomes an exclusive and only Insight can service it. It means the franchise grants them the authority to cross the cities right away to extend their cable.
Yes.
And the other technical issues are really not something most people are interested in, except the number of... in, except the number of units serviced.
We would certainly welcome competition. I don't know. I mean, I keep thinking, you know, I'm going to say it's public, I guess, but keep thinking maybe AT&amp;T may be our first shot at competition. Who knows? They're in Louisville now. They're in Hopkinsville. I've not heard anything about them expressing interest to bring a franchise here. But the good thing about, at least for them, they already have a lot of their network in place because they have poles and they have lines. And that's one of the hardest things about bringing in competition. And I always tell people, it was two things. One, the cost of putting in a cable system. It's, I mean, Rick can answer the question better than I can, but it's expensive. We're talking millions of dollars to put in a cable system with all the cable lines and the equipment and everything else. And then second hardest issue would be the penetration rate of, you know, Insight. Insight has a lot of customers in Bowling Green, Warren County. A competitor would have to cut into that, you know, be competitive enough to cut into that, you know, that program they already have here to bring competition. But again, this is non-exclusive. And if anybody's gained success of bringing the competitor, like I said, bring them on and we'll welcome them.
Yes, sir.
The only other issue that a couple of people brought to my attention is Insight is required to have a local number, local people. And I've heard some that they may get transferred to another location. It actually happened to me when I called on behalf of someone who I was transferred, I don't know where the calls were transferred to. But that's a requirement as well that they have that local person.
I'd go back, I think we do have that requirement. I'm not too sure it's applicable after hours because I think they have an office in Evansville and Louisville, I think, as well. So I'm not too sure. We're saying twenty-four hours a day, they have to have somebody here to answer. They are required to have a local office, which is another good thing our franchise agreement provides for because some communities are losing their local office. But I think, I go back and look at franchise, I think you are correct that they are required to answer phones, particularly during the normal working hours here in Bowling Green.
And this, a couple of examples were during normal business hours.
Okay. Let me check on that.
We, well, we had that discussion a couple, three years ago with the president from Insight. We met with him. And that was one of the issues that we brought up was the fact you dial seven eight two oh nine oh three, you get Evansville. Well, I don't want Evansville. I want to talk to somebody in Bowling Green. And even if you give the name of that person, they got to transfer you back from Evansville to Bowling Green to speak with that person.
If I have memory correct, I thought at that conversation, we were sure that that local number would be open, especially from eight to five, whatever. But let me check for the local manager.
I do know that that changed when they put in an automated calling system. And the calls probably do go directly to a call center and then routed back. But they have maintained an office here.
Other questions or discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill. Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
I have to abstain.
Denny.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2013, number twenty-seven.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute agreement for transfer of ownership and maintenance responsibility of portions of State Street and Normal Street between the City of Bowling Green and Western Kentucky University.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Williams. Mr. Fable.
Last month, we had a show and tell by representatives of Western Kentucky University about their desire to take ownership of portions of State Street and Normal Street. We heard the presentation. The agreement, as Gene outlines in the ordinance, has WKU basically providing almost all parts of what maintenance means on the street. Our responsibility will be essentially to take care of the traffic lights at the terminals. What's important to us as a corporation is to maintain that road as a public conveyance, which it still will be. I think there's representatives from WKU here.
Hey. And Jeff is here if you have any more questions other than what we heard last month. Yes, sir. Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of three questions that I'd like to ask. How you doing?
This is Brian Russell.
Mr. Russell. I've had two or three phone calls and about our plans of turning over Normal Street to the university. If you would explain to me the intent of Western is to do what? To make that street more pedestrian-friendly?
Absolutely.
Okay. Which means in most cases, and I'm sure in this case, we're talking about a slower speed limit?
Yes, sir. Fifteen miles an hour is our proposed speed limit. And that's consistent with other portions or roadways on the hill.
Okay. Now, by during that, and I'm sure we've looked at it, the traffic coming off University Boulevard and from Sumter Avenue area, the subdivision, if you're going west, I would say the Sumter area subdivision, more than likely, we're going to be putting more traffic on University Boulevard to go towards Kentucky Street or to go towards the bypass, are we not?
I can't make that determination. I don't think the traffic pattern will change much. We still have a lot of traffic on there today. I think the intent is to slow the traffic down, provide better lighting. We've just had such an increase in pedestrians and actually students over the last several years.
Sure.
That the intent is just to slow things down, provide better lighting, wider sidewalks, better crosswalks.
Is it any future thoughts about once, if we transfer this street over to the university, or the street being turned into a one-way?
No, sir. And that's consistent with our master plan, which is public information, and it's on our website. And we've got a twenty-year master plan. So it's never been proposed that way, ever.
Okay.
Commission, we also have, we also have a sentence in agreement that says it'll remain two-way. If it ever decides to go one way, they have to get a commission approval. That's in the agreement.
Now, the sidewalks, are there plans? And I don't know whether it can be done. I know it can be done, but whether or not it would be something that the university will consider in their twenty-year plan. Is there thoughts of making the sidewalks wider on both sides of the street?
Yes, sir.
Which way will they go? Will they go towards the street?
They will go toward the street. And we've already widened the section between College Heights Boulevard and to the end of State Street, or really at the big red wall that's in the corner. And we did that in conjunction with the high voltage improvement project that we did about a year ago. And it's very consistent with what we would do on both sides of the street. Plus, we would like to put a couple of pull-offs on the side of the dormitories for buses so that the buses would actually get off of the thoroughfare. But that would be on the university property side of the right-of-way.
By widening the sidewalks down in the lower sections, that is going to make the streets a lot narrower down there?
No, sir. We're not going to narrow the streets in this plan. The sidewalks would just go to the curb. And so we would basically start where the sidewalks are today. We are going to take those sidewalks out, and we're going to take it to the curb line. What that does in that area does move the little strip of grass. But that way, we don't encroach on anybody's property. And the reason we're taking the old sidewalks out is so that we can get a very consistent and smooth pedestrian walkway.
That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Would just someone remind the citizens now what Western will be able to do with these streets and what they won't be able to do with the streets unless they come back to the commission?
Oh.
I don't know if it was come from Gene.
Gene, you want to outline that?
Well, just a couple of things. Like I said, I think Mr. Fable has already mentioned it. The main things we put in agreements are responsibility to take care of stuff. For example, the pavement, sidewalks, asphalt and curb, street lighting, the street signage, crosswalks, stormwater inlets, removal of litter, mowing, street cleaning, tree trimming, snow removal. All that will be removed to Western's responsibility for those streets. As Mr. DeFebbe mentioned, we do have language in here that they will remain open to public use and perpetuity. So these will remain public streets. It's just Western will assume control and responsibility to maintain them. And in response to Commissioner Denny men ago, we did put language in here that says they will remain open two-directional, and it takes city commission approval for Western to ever change that to one-way. But other than that, that's the basic, basically just turn all responsibility, maintain those streets to them.
Jeff is also here. Commissioner Hill, if you'd like to hear from the engineering point of view.
Talking about the speeds, it is a lower speed limit than what they're proposing. But if you think about it, if you drive through there today, the impedance that you incur with people trying to cross virtually the whole section. So I think this makes it much safer. The city realizes, city as a whole still realizes the benefit of the road remaining open. So anyway, although it might be a slower speed limit, you still may get to point A, from point A to point B about the same time you would anyway.
Has there been any talk of training the students how to cross the streets? I really believe no matter what the speed limit is, they do not pay attention that they're crossing. They're on their phones. They're texting. They're talking. I mean, it's at the traffic lights. It's at the sidewalks. Has there been talk at Western that they plan on encouraging students?
During our presentation, one of the things that was really evident is that we did not have any sidewalk before on the section of State Street up toward the planetarium. And we had parked cars in that area. And then we also had put a small bike lane. And I say we, we the city. And what we were seeing was that we had students everywhere. Since we have implemented and put the wider sidewalks, we're having a tremendous amount more of the students on both sides with the ten-foot sidewalks. We've removed the cars. And we are seeing better patterns of our students, which is important for all of us. I mean, it's just a lot more awareness. And then within the last couple of years, we have also implemented and put some, I'm going to call them, nice signage in the center of the road that's highly visible, which does give a heads up for the students and it gives a heads up for the drivers. And I think we've already started to see a behavior change on that section of the right-of-way.
I would agree they use the sidewalks, but I've yet to see improvement of them using the crosswalks. They pay no attention. So if you can do something to encourage paying attention, that would be great.
Mr. Williams.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
This may be for Jeff as well. He and I share a common passion about avoiding street cuts wherever possible. We've got some underground utilities in that area. How is that going to be addressed if Western is controlling this particular section of the street? Do we have underground, need to access underground? Who would be responsible for those repairs? How would that be done?
There are underground utilities along this section of road, like pretty well everywhere else. Any repairs, according to the agreement, Western will maintain all the pavement. So the utility company, of course, would have to do the repair work. Western makes sure that that remains in a good order and passable and not detrimental to a driver or car or anything like that. Brian, I don't know if y'all have any long-term plans or...
Well, one of the things that we have, we already have made transfer of the College Heights Boulevard section from State Street. It used to be the old Fifteenth Street. And we have a lot of public utilities under those grounds. And our procedure, we both have a Before You Dig, WKU, and we also do a City Dig. One of the things that we've been working together on is what they call a GIS, GPS mapping system. And before we implemented that, which is managed out of the Office of Planning, Design, and Construction. Atmos Energy has come on board with us, and we are now mapping and helping them. And they're helping us also with the city water, et cetera. So there's a lot of things going on between Public Works and WKU with identifying where these utilities are, using highly sophisticated equipment. And we're starting to get those things put online. But the most important thing is Call Before You Dig and Call WKU Before You Dig. And that seems to work very, very well for many years.
That's good news.
Any other comments, questions? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2013, number three.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Denny. Mr. Fable.
A budget is of little value unless it's managed and reflects the reality. At the time, we do this through an amendment process. Jeff and his staff, as well as others, manage the budget on a day-to-day basis, along with Katie. And we come to you when we need to make adjustments that require your approval. Jeff can take it from here.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Mousler or something in particular you want to point out to us? We've got plenty of information here for us to read. So thank you very much. All right. Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And that's the last item on our regular agenda. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February nineteenth. And we have a closed session. I'm sorry.
If we finish, I have one other comment. I'd like to make mention, we've talked a lot about service. Retired police captain Charles Hunter passed away Sunday at the medical center. And he gave a tremendous amount of service, not only to our community, but to our country. And we just want to express our gratitude, I know all of us do, for his service and pass along our condolences to the family.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
He's a former classmate of mine. We attended the old High Street High School that was located down where the emergency room of the medical center is located now. We attended together up to the ninth or tenth grade. And when the school system in Bowling Green integrated, Charlie went on to Warren Center along with a lot of others of my class at High Street. He was a personal friend.
Mayor, it's my understanding there'll be no vote after the exact session.
I understand. Anything else? All right. We'll take a ten-minute recess and return for closed session. Thank you for tuning in.